7:14 PM. And we are at Action Items. We are at Adopting Resolution Number 2017-18-10 to establish an equitable vision for advanced coursework in all high schools by replacing highly capable pathways at the high school level with a localized assignment model by 2021-22, CNI. January 9th for approval?
Yeah, so this was brought forward by, in CNI, January 9th for approval. I would like to make a motion. I move that the School Board adopt Resolution Number 2017/18-10 as attached to this Board Action Report.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, and concerns? I see Mr. DeWolf, excuse me. General Counsel, could you come to the box, please?
Yes, Noel Tree, General Counsel.
Okay. At this time, is it appropriate to add substitutes and amendments and then go backwards? Would that be correct, Kind Sir?
It would, yes. The motion for a substitute is essentially like a motion to amend, so you could entertain that at this time. And then you would work backwards from the substitute. You would vote on that first and then vote to adopt either the substituted resolution or the original motion.
Okay, we go to substitutes and then we go to amendments to the substitutes? Is that correct?
Yes. If the motion is made to amend the substitute, you would first vote on the motion to amend the substitute, then you would vote on the substitute as amended, and then ultimately you'd vote for final adoption of the amended substitute.
Okay, so we put them all out there and then we back them out? Is that correct?
In terms of voting, yes. Yes, in terms of voting. And then, given their interrelated nature, probably discussion and debate can be had amongst all three components at the same time.
Okay, and you don't get to leave the room.
I'll be here.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Substitute Resolution Number 2017-18-10 to affirm the vision for equitable access to advanced coursework in all high schools and develop the detailed plan for implementation by 2021-22. Do I hear said motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to the substitute resolution.
I second the motion.
Could you please read the substitute resolution paragraph into the record?
I'm pulling it up this second. Do you have it right there? I move that this Board replace Resolution Number 2017-18-10 as introduced on January 17th, 2018 with substitute Resolution Number 2017-18-10, a resolution of the Board of Directors of Seattle School District Number 1, King County, Seattle, Washington, to affirm the vision for equitable access to advanced coursework in all high schools and develop the detailed plan for implementation by 2021-22 as attached to this Board Action Report.
Next up, we have Amendment 1 to substitute Resolution Number 2017/18-10, adding a values-based statement regarding the equitable provision of advanced coursework. Do I hear a motion?
Excuse me, I think you need a second first on the motion to substitute. I don't know if I heard that.
We did have a second from Director Pinkham, Kind Sir.
Okay, my apologies.
Thank you, though, for keeping track. We need all the help we can get.
I know, I'm sick, but I...
Substitute Resolution.
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment.
There is a motion for an Amendment 1 to the substitute resolution. Do we hear a second to same?
Do I need to read it out right now?
Seconds? Okay.
Do I need to read that out, right?
Do you want me to read the motion?
Yeah.
Yes, for purposes of creating the right record, you do need to read that into the record.
So, I'd like to make an amendment. I move that the following clause be added to the substitute resolution between the first and second resolved clause, quote, "resolved," that the School Board, acting on the core values established by the district's strategic plan and policy number 0030, establishing educational and racial equity, sets a goal for the district to assign all students entering high school, including students designated as highly capable, to their neighborhood high schools by the school year 2021-2022, which is a goal that, when implemented well and with appropriate oversight by Board, will increase access to advanced coursework for high school students across the district, in particular for students of color and historically underserved populations, and therefore be it further," end quote.
Thank you so much. No, we're still working on amendments, I believe. Is that correct, General Counsel?
It's moved and seconded.
That's Amendment 1 to the...
Substitute.
Substitute Resolution. We also have additional amendments. Do we go through those now, or do we just work with Amendment 1 to the substitute?
I wasn't aware of proposed additional amendments at this point. I will say, the general rule under Robert's rules is you don't do a third layer of amendment, which would be the next layer. So, at this point, you would discuss and debate what's on the table, which is the amendment and the substitute, and vote first on the amendment, then on the substitute, as amended or not. And then you could entertain additional amendments if there are any.
Okay. This is open for comments, questions, and concerns from my colleagues. Director Mack.
So, speaking to the Amendment 1 of the substitute resolution brought forward by Director DeWolf, I too, and the substitute resolution also acknowledges 0030 and a lot of the points that are made in this additional resolve clause. The substantial challenge to the language that's here is that it's not only impacting highly capable, but it actually would fundamentally change our student assignment and impact option school students' assignment, as well as other choice assignments, because the language actually says that, it says the goal, the district assigned all students entering high school, including students designated as highly capable, to their neighborhood schools. And right now, we have a limited choice system in which we have option schools, and we have limited choice options into other attendance area schools. And that specific language, setting forth that goal, is a fundamental drastic change to our entire student assignment plan, from my perspective.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I just want to clarify that's...
Director DeWolf, please.
Not the intention.
Director Petu.
I just feel like, you know, when I look at these amendments and actually these resolutions about moving highly capable and pathways, I guess, as a board director, I really am not very sure in terms of whether these are actually a good mood or not, in terms of the overall of what we've been doing in the past. I guess I'm just a little backward, and I really feel like I need more information on these movements before I actually vote on it. Maybe I'm the only one here that actually not with it, but I've been trying to read these all week, and still I have come to the conclusion that I really wanted to have it specify exactly what is the meaning of all this when we move these resolutions, and certainly, you know, when we're actually looking at these resolutions and these amendments. So maybe I'm confused. Can somebody please lighten me up a little bit?
If we stand by and listen to the comments, questions, and concerns, if those enlighten you, and if they don't, will you speak up before we vote? Okay. Okay. And Director Mack and Superintendent Nyland, is that correct? You want to speak or not?
I'll wait on your comment.
You'll wait on my comment, or Director Mack's comment?
I'll pass for that.
Thank you, sir. Just trying to make sure the trains are running in the same direction. Director Mack.
So, in attempting to help create clarification on what's before us today, the original resolution came forward through CNI, was discussed. It had one specific policy outcome, which was sending HC students back to their neighborhood schools or their attendance area schools. From my perspective, in order to actually create equity across the district and for all students, the goal that we're focused on here is creating equity and access to advanced coursework in all of our high schools for all students, not just if you're labeled, not just if you're highly capable. And that the work that needs to be done in order to get there is to collaborate with principals, instructional leaders, the district, tie it to our work with the 24 credit requirements that is coming up. We need to increase identification of students into the advanced learning and the highly capable programs. There's two programs that we have. Highly capable is just one of them. The advanced learning is another, and that is another place in which we're still identifying and telling kids that they're either advanced or not. So I think that's, in terms of identification, we need to address that, address the equity in how we identify, and ensure that we are implementing practices that truly create access for all students to accelerated, advanced, rich learning opportunities. At the same time, we have to focus on the issues around identity safety and the labeling that happens. I think these are very real, important aspects of this issue. And so the original resolution had a policy outcome, which was sending HC students back to their neighborhood schools. But all of this additional work in terms of equitable identification, in terms of working with principals and instructional leaders in the district, actually, I figure out what exactly is that course progression? What are we offering? What are we saying? And also working on how to develop the comprehensive plan for providing advanced learning in all of our high schools. How do we do that? And let's focus on doing that work and creating equitable access across the entire district. So, we work together to create a substitute resolution that addresses those things and sets a timeline in place for us to first figure out how to do more equitable identification by 1920, and soon thereafter, have a comprehensive plan of how we're going to implement advanced coursework, opportunities for all students across all of our high schools. So, the substitute resolution that we have in front of us today offers us this amazing opportunity to address the concerns that we've been hearing from the HCC equity community that's been speaking to us every board meeting for months, as they should be, about equitable identification, as something that we need to do. And we need to go further to ensure that we work with our principals and instructional leaders in the district to sort out exactly what we're going to be providing and create that access. So the substitute resolution incorporates all of those goals to set the plan, and it sets timelines by which we need to accomplish these things. So I hope that helps.
It does.
Yes, because Director Petu, as a co-sponsor on this, worked on the language to incorporate some very important aspects around the identity safety and cultural competency and other things. And it's a long document, but I hope folks take the time to read it, because it's meaningful. And I hope that creates clarification. Thank you.
Director DeWolf, and then Director Geary, please.
I am grateful that you brought up the HCC and equity folks, because I think they're pretty clear about localizing it. I just want to, that's what I heard from them. Additionally, you know, one of the things that's come up a bunch in emails and from folks that are concerned about waiting, not doing our job to create a vision, cast that vision as one of our roles, responsibilities as a board member. I'm reminded, every year on MLK Day, my husband and I have the letter from Birmingham Jail framed. I try to read it every year. That might be him calling me, sorry. And it says, this quote particularly, "Frankly, I have yet to engage in a direct action campaign that was well timed in the view of those who have not suffered unduly from the disease of segregation. For years now, I have heard the word 'wait.' It rings in the ear of every Negro with piercing familiarity. This 'wait' has almost always meant 'never.' I am concerned that if we continue to use the word 'plan' as a stall tactic, then we continue to tell these communities, particularly communities of color and historically marginalized communities, 'Wait, we'll get to you, we're coming, just wait,' and what they will hear is never." I guess that's where I'm trying to say, particularly with the amendment that I've added, is how can we also continue to create a vision around a value on equity that makes sure to do what is supported by the comments from many folks in our community that say they do want localized services?
Director Geary, and then Director Burke.
I think the use of the word "change boundaries if appropriate" is interesting in that a free, appropriate public education is what every special education student is entitled to in this district, and that is considered the basic floor of educational opportunity. And I heard Superintendent Nyland say the other day that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but 17% of the kids that go to college from Rainier Beach go to top-tier schools. 15%, which means if you go to Rainier Beach and you go to school there, you will be eligible to get in, you will potentially be eligible to get into a top-tier school. And then I ask myself, what is the purpose of public education? Public education is to prepare students for their future, for independent living, to go on to that next step. And so, even at Rainier Beach, if you have a student who needs to go on to university, they will be and can be prepared to do so. So that tells me that the basic floor of public education, the appropriateness, can already be achieved in every single one of our high schools. Appropriate, that is what people get. Not the absolute best, not everything that meets every single aspect of their child's personal situation at the highest level. It is not maximizing, and that is what special education families hear every single day. Appropriate, appropriate, appropriate. And I feel like we have a cohort of people who, yes, it is important to educate your student, but to what end? And public education has a goal, and we've met that goal. We can meet that goal today in every school. But we're saying, by my resolution, two years. We've got two years to do more, to make sure that there's a more robust, it's not just appropriate, it's a little more than appropriate, maybe, but that's the deadline for it. So I'm with Director DeWolf. Waiting, no more. We can already do appropriate, it's already there. So, I say we move forward with all haste. We have two years, we can do the other planning, but, and we were intending, there's nothing by my resolution that eliminated that kind of planning, and I have been assured by staff that they wanted the broad, big-picture goal, but it would by no means eliminate the work that needs to go into implementing it. But if it's appropriate, we want, we got it.
Director Burke.
I'm taken back to sort of the history of how we've got here. Recognize that this is work that started around high school boundaries, around opening Lincoln High School, and around shifting, you know, making adjustments to our high school boundaries to balance capacity. We have, if I get my numbers right, approximately 1,400 students currently in highly capable high schools, essentially a school's worth. And how that, those students are allocated, whether pathways, whether localized, whether a different pathway model, plays a big impact in how we do high school boundaries. So what started with boundaries led to a necessary and critical discussion around highly capable pathways in high school. At, you may recall, in last year, there was a discussion around a five-pathway model, and then a commitment to a fully localized model, or fully decentralized model. And I think some of the concern around that time was, wow, that sounds like a great idea. How do we get there? And what I heard, what I felt, what I shared was, yeah, that's what I believe I want for my kid, that's what I believe I would like for my community. And there may be folks that disagree with me. And so I still continue to believe that we should be able to offer highly capable services in every high school, because the structure of high school is different from the structure of K-8, that because of the master schedule, because of the flexibility that our high school leaders have, we can offer these opportunities to our students. I don't believe we do it equitably. I hear from families around the equity component, I hear from families around, I have one student that's HC identified and one that's not, and I'd like them to go to school together. And so would I. So that history led to a quick discussion, maybe a lengthy discussion on one day, which the Board didn't come to consensus on what that was going to look like. And so we took the visionary part of that, the pathways for highly capable, and several directors sponsored this resolution through the Curriculum Instruction Policy Committee that was then discussed at a little bit deeper level, and the community had a bigger chance to weigh in. And then, one of the things that I heard at one of my community meetings that really struck me, because I was sharing this aspirational vision as well, like, we should be able to do this. There's no reason we shouldn't. If it's our commitment, the structure of high school does not preclude us from doing this. And the feedback I heard was, well, but that resolution says there's one outcome. So you're predetermining one outcome without describing how that one outcome serves our students best. And so I'm like, wow, that's pretty insightful, because we have international baccalaureate schools, one of which is an optional HC pathway, two others which are amazing and could and should be comparable, but are not identified as pathways, per se. So, or funded, but that's a different discussion. So, what really, and the other element about this that had me concerned is that I don't believe that changing the high school pathway model is going to have a hugely significant impact on high school equity, because I believe that so much of it is about identification and preparation in the K-8 years. It opens the doors, it enables that, it sets our students on a path to do that, but if we don't identify and prepare the students in the K-8 grades, shuffling things around at high school is not going to change our imbalance. So, I am excited and enthusiastic about the changes to it. We're essentially doing policy work on high school or on the highly capable program in the context of boundary work. So my commitment as Chair of CNI was, we're going to put that on the work plan for CNI, because, wow, we have to do this. We have to do this by 2021. We better start working on it. So we're going to put on the work plan. So my colleagues came forth with, not only are you putting it on your work plan, but we're going to put it in the resolution. So, that's really exciting to me, that we're including these elements of identification that we're continually reminded we should be looking at. It's work that we've been reminded for a long time we should be doing. So, I'm really supportive of that. I'm super supportive of the replace, supplement, what's the word?
Substitute.
Substitute, thank you. The substitute resolution. My concern around the amendment is both that we're setting a predetermined outcome without really understanding what are the ranges of ways we could do that. We heard from community in our thought exchange survey that, wow, there, a lot of folks didn't even realize, you know, from some of our under-reached groups, they didn't even realize that highly capable services existed, much less that they could be eligible. And they wanted them closer to home when they knew about them. But we didn't put it out as, what is the one model that we think we need to provide to reach your students? And so that's where I realized, like, wow, a predetermined outcome for this is maybe overly prescriptive. So I am 100% committed to the date, but I'm also 100% committed to the process of doing the outreach with those communities to understand what that needs to look like, because our schools have individual character. And we're finding, whether it's in science, whether it's in ethnic studies, all of the initiatives that we're doing, we're trying to find a common element that we can put out at all of our schools, but we also have to make sure that they have individuality, that they have a level of personalization, that they can own it. So that's my hope, is that this work will move forward. My expectation is that it will move forward, and that the date of 2021 is a firm date and is a hard stop. But I'm not a supporter of the amendment, because I'm concerned, first of all, that the language might be overly prescriptive and could cause us to assign all students, including like our dual-language ones that are on other pathways. And so I think that it's something that just needs a little bit more vetting, but I do believe that the intent is absolutely built into the substitute resolution. And so that's why I will not be supporting the amendment, but I will be supporting the substitute.
Did you wish to speak, Director Pinkham?
Yeah, as a co-sponsor for the substitute amendment, one of my concerns with the original one is that, you know, how much can we do by 1920? And I know we want to diversify our, you know, ACC cohorts so they can get there, but there are issues as far as that, I think, brought up very good concerns from people down in the South saying, well, if you localize my HCC by 1920 and say you have to go there, I'm not sure I am going to have the classes that I would need access to, that I would have access to at Garfield. So that's why I was wondering, we need to look at this a little bit better, see, how do we need to address this? So that's why I said, well, let's look at what we can do as far as the plan, so that our HCC students, especially those underserved, do have the same access. If they're from a school that not, can't support that, what can we do to make sure they're on a path or have the option to go to a school that has their pathway, or the classes that they need? Or that students aren't coming from middle school and repeating classes at their local school, neighborhood school? How can we address those issues? So, that's why I felt that the original one, send it, you know, right here and then there, we need to make a little more careful planning to do that. And still to have that as a goal, because I think that's where the district does want to move, that we have our localized HCC. But I see we need to, some of the plan, not to wait anymore. I don't see that as being waiting. We are progressing toward that as a goal.
Director DeWolf?
Just want to clarify, it's 2021. There'll be additional two school years. So, I know there's a sense that that would be very accelerated, but there's two extra years to your concern.
Superintendent Nyland, it's your turn.
Kind of, I was where Director Petu was. One of my comments often is, good people with good information make good decisions. And this part of the decision came to be originally because we were trying to get early warning for open enrollment that starts here in a week or so. And now we're talking about... And now we're talking about two years out for picking a date and being ready, and it's not necessarily, it's not, I mean, we haven't made a decision, so it's not part of the pathway decisions that people are going to be acting on in the next few days. So, this, part of this has gone through committee, part of it has not gone through committee, and we had not had the opportunity to staff it, we've not had the opportunity to talk about the fiscal note, we've not had an opportunity to talk about, what is it, we've, this is part of our budget process, this is part of our goal-setting process, and this is part of, another part of our work, that I lost track of, our legislative agenda. So, if the board's ready to make a decision tonight, so be it. I guess I'm hopeful that we could figure out how to come to agreement, sounds like we're kind of close on saying that we want to not just have an aspirational goal, but we want to have a plan to get there, but we also want a date certain. So it sounds like we kind of have the elements on the table, but we can't quite get them together in a way that, maybe, that we get votes for, or maybe we do. So, I guess I'm, I don't know where Director Petu is now, good advice, in terms of maybe we make up our minds, we have the discussion here tonight. But it just seems like if we do take this back through, through the committee, and give it an opportunity to be staffed, like most of our other work, that we may be able to find something that all, or nearly all of the directors can agree to.
Director Mack?
Thank you, Dr. Nyland. The resolution and the bar actually was, was sent to staff for their input on the fiscal impact, and I'd like to read what that states. Fiscal impact to this action will depend on the specific identification strategies employed. The resolution, the substitute resolution does not specifically state, these are what they're going to be, it just says, we're going to do more equitable access. So that those future decisions on the actual impact to the budget will be made in the future. We're making the commitment to equitable identification through the resolution, but we're not committing specific dollars. And then the second part of this says, the resolution directs staff to perform a large body of work, although to a certain extent, this work was already on staff's work plan. It's not actually adding work, it's work that we said we're going to be doing anyway. We're doing 24 credits. Staff has stood up very clearly at the last meeting and shared with us how they feel like they can provide advanced learning for all students in all of our high schools. So this is just actually getting more clear around requiring the collaboration with principals and instructional leaders in the community, actually defining what that's going to be as we move forward, and, and doing the process. I mean, I feel like this is actually better governance than saying an aspirational goal without defining how we're going to get from A to B and defining the process. And I appreciate the, all of the staff that have contributed to, to drafting all of these various bars and resolutions and the, and providing that statement, that this is already on our work plan, all it is doing is providing a little bit more structure and the commitment from the board, that this is what we, we intend to do.
Director Petu, does that help clarify, or do you have some specific questions still?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Director Geary?
I appreciate the work that Director Mack has done, from the initial proposal, to take off some of the specifics. I guess my only concern is that with the, if appropriate, we will be back here again in two years, and we have failed to give that notice, which I think that firm notice and that firm commitment to the deadline puts our families on notice about what enrollment will look like in two years. And I think this has a fuzziness to it, that will mean, people will come to us saying they are very surprised by what we are proposing in two years. So, I, I guess I can't support putting our district through that same turmoil again in two years. I, I would support something that both included the resolve around planning, but, but looked to the outcome. And while I appreciate Director Burke's concerns about one outcome, there's nothing in this that means that the pathways or the schools won't have these options still, the IB options, and that for some kids, the Robinson Center will still be available, and for some kids, Running Start will still be available. It is the kids on the advanced learning side of the spectrum that have the most options, even if they are routed to their local high school. And so, I don't think necessarily an outcome of directing children to their neighborhood, or students to their neighborhood schools, should be viewed as displacement, should be viewed as a lesser option than the same options we are providing to every other student in this district.
Director Mack?
Thank you, Director Geary, for those comments. And the interaction between 1,400 students that are currently in the highly capable program, and having them be reassigned to different schools is, is an amazing impact on what that would require for boundary shifts for our neighborhood schools. We are severely overcapacity in, and we already know that even when Lincoln opens, it's going to be full really quickly. We don't have extra seats, we're going to have, we have on the agenda here, after we have these conversations about the capacity management, just for next year, and we're spending $4 million to manage our overcrowding and move portables, and eke spaces out of places that don't exist, because of our capacity constraints. And the impact of, of changing student assignment without doing that analysis about, what does that actually mean for how many students will be assigned where, is, from the capacity perspective, from a buildings and basic perspective, really deeply concerning to me. And part of the reason why I feel like it is really important that we say, if appropriate, we make, we make those thoughtful decisions around student assignment, because we have to consider what our building capacity is, and where they are, and where students are going to be assigned, and how that, you know, that we will have a seat and a desk for every student. And so I think that's, this plan sets very clear deadlines, that by 2019, there will be a report about the comprehensive plan for increasing the access across all schools. And once reviewing that plan, and enrollment assignment policies and practices, staff can make recommended changes to increase, perhaps localize, perhaps increase the number of pathways. I share the same goal of ensuring, this entire resolution shares the same goal of ensuring that in high school, we have access for every student to advanced rigorous work, and all of those things need to be tied together. And I think it's really important that we don't, we don't make promises we can't keep, and we are careful not to say, ready, shoot, aim. And I feel like, from my perspective, the substitute resolution says, ready, aim, shoot. And we have a very clear direction on where we're headed, and intention around it, with a solid plan for getting there.
Director DeWolf, and I have a time check here of 7:52.
I just had two comments. The first is that last week, we, or two weeks ago, everything blends together these days. Two weeks ago, we heard from staff that made it pretty clear that this is doable, that we can actually do this. So I trust them, so I just want to make that clear, that it has been stated explicitly that this is doable. I guess, to add on to Director Geary's comments, it feels like it's a, an ejector seat. If folks at that time don't feel like it works for them, particularly from the dominant culture, then we can just use this kind of ejector seat, and we don't have to, we don't have to deal with this at that time. It feels like we're giving ourselves an out, and I think I'm hopeful that with my amendment and our resolution, that we stick to a plan that I know our staff, and certainly do trust you, can actually accomplish.
Other comments, concerns, or questions, or is it my turn, and then we move to a vote? Do I desire to see diversity and high rigor in every school in our district? I most certainly do. Do I believe that this is the way to get there? I do not. Unfortunately, we have broken a great many promises over the years, and without a plan, with a human capital note, and a fiscal note, I'm unwilling to make promises that I don't know that we can keep. One of the things that your executive committee is doing now, with the assistance of the superintendent and the deputy superintendent, is backward mapping our goals. We are going to have Core 24 on X date, and we are backward mapping the committee, and the human capital, and the other steps that we have to take to be able to fulfill those There is a principal in my district who I have extreme respect for, and we disagree, and, and that hurts my heart, but we see the world differently, we want to get to the same goal, we're going to get there differently. But those of y'all that know me, know that I've been fighting hard for the International Baccalaureate Program to be the stunning success that it can be. It has not been funded with fidelity. We are not at Core 24, where we should be. We have run out of waivers. It is beyond uncomfortable to sit up here on this dais and to somehow feel disloyal to our hardworking staff. Because I have enormous respect for our hardworking staff, but I am beyond unwilling to vote for something where we don't have a human capital and a fiscal note for every step. That said, Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please, on Amendment Number One.
Director Burke? Director DeWolf?
Hell, yes.
Director Geary?
Yes.
Director Mack?
No.
Director Petu?
No.
Director Pinkham?
No.
Director Harris?
No.
This is not passed by a vote of two to five.
Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please, on the substitute resolution.
Director Burke? Director DeWolf?
Oh.
Director Geary?
No.
Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Petu?
Upstaying.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
This is passed with a vote of four to two to one.
Mr. General Counsel, do we now move to the amendments? Or do we go to the approval of the High School Growth Boundaries Plan, and we work on that? I skipped a significant piece, is that correct?
Yes, so I think technically where you are right now is, you voted down the amendment, you've essentially voted to substitute the original amendment with the substitute, and now the final vote is that you adopt the resolution as substituted, would be your final step, unless someone wants to propose additional amendments before final adoption.
Okay, Ms. Scheck, we are reaffirming our vote to the substitute resolution as amended, is that correct, sir?
Essentially, you want to move, you now want to vote on adopting the resolution as substituted.
We are moving the resolution as substitute.
Yes.
Ms. Scheck, the roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
No.
Director Geary? Director Mack?
Yes.
Director Petu?
Yes.
Director Pinkham?
Yes.
Director Harris?
Yes.
This motion, adopting resolution as substituted, has passed with a vote of six to one.
Thank you, moving on to Action Item Number Two. Approval of the 2019-20 High School Growth Boundaries Plan and Highly Capable Pathways for 2019-20 and 2021, went to Ops on December 7th. Director Mack?
Yes, this came to Ops originally on December 7, yes.
And for consideration?
For consideration, it has gone through a number of iterations with work sessions and so forth, and we are now with the present proposal.
Vice President Burke, would you please make the formal motion?
I move that the school board approve the 2019-20 High School Growth Boundaries Plan labeled Scenario F, Version 4.3, and the Lincoln Grade Implementation and Grandfathering Plan, as outlined in Attachment N. Additionally, I move that the board direct the superintendent to take any appropriate actions to implement this decision.
Second to the motion, please.
Second the motion.
Comments, questions, and concerns from my colleagues, please? Or, excuse me, Mr. General Counsel, this is where we start putting the ornaments and the amendments on it, correct, and work backwards?
That's correct. And given that you have five, at least five proposed amendments, that are not necessarily interrelated in the same way you had in the, in the last, in the discussion about resolutions, you may want to take discussion of those one at a time, to keep those discussions organized.
Okay, Amendment One. Move the North End Dual Language Immersion High School Pathway from Ingram to Lincoln in 2019-20, and develop a Southeast Dual Language Immersion Pathway. May I have a formal motion, Mr. Vice President?
I move that the Dual Language Immersion Pathway be amended as follows, for the 2019-20 school year, John Stanford and McDonald flows to Hamilton, flows to Lincoln, Beacon Hill and Dearborn Park flows to Mercer, flows to Chief South, Concord flows to Denny, flows to Chief South. Upon approval, this information will be included in the next Student Assignment Transition Plan. I further move that the staff develop and present a Southeast High School Dual Language Immersion Pathway option to include in the next Student Assignment Transition Plan, and take effect starting in the 2019-20 school year.
Formal second, please.
Second the motion.
Okay, we're on Amendment One. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. Director Burke?
I will just do a quick introduction, sort of statement for. This is in the heart of my region, and I have a, a large community constituency that is essentially following this pathway of John Stanford to Hamilton, from Hamilton, John Stanford and McDonald to Hamilton, and from Hamilton Middle School, their current pathway is to Ingram High School. So that has a transportation component, and there's also a natural proximity of Hamilton and Lincoln. So the, converting that pathway from Ingram High School to Lincoln
and Lincoln. So the, converting that pathway from Ingram High School to Lincoln High School is geographically convenient, broadly supported by the community, as you can see from your email. It does have a cost impact, as is stated in the bar. It has been evaluated by staff and has been reduced from the amount at introduction on closer scrutiny. And I think that the, the work around this included a really comprehensive review by staff of the work of our dual language immersion programs. And there's a recommendation from the Dual Language Immersion Task Force that includes both building out the pathway in the southeast and using, or transferring the, the North End Pathway to Lincoln High School. So this is also consistent with the recommendation from our Community and Staff Task Force around this work. I'll leave it there.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Geary, please.
My concern about this is that one of the early approaches I took when I was on the board was getting a full district picture in order to make decisions about where programs are. In this case, there was a decision at one point to put the Dual Language High School Pathway up north at Ingram. And it would seem to me that that could have been logically and equitably done for the purpose of pulling some capacity up northward to Ingram, to making that program available to what is now considered our community of the highest free and reduced lunch and some of the greatest diversity. So now we are pulling it back to the center, and we will later be talking about creating Lincoln as the Highly Capable Pathway. And I do read in the back notes that, I believe I read that, from the people outside the geographic area of Lincoln, 58% of those people are non, non-white. So it, from an equity perspective, I guess I would feel more comfortable if we were talking about relieving the capacity crisis in the middle by drawing the elementary pathway northern, instead of having two elementary schools in the same area, creating capacity issues around Green Lake. But instead, we are concentrating it back down, giving us less flexibility around the neighborhood elementary schools. And so we're not alleviating something that we've already identified as a problem for ourselves in long-term planning. So for that reason, I, I don't support this direction on the program, and would have rather seen that we made long-term plans for creating the pathway north and giving more access to this program to our families in the north part of our district.
Director Burke?
I, I think that's a, a valid and appropriate sort of aspirational goal. Unfortunately, it didn't fit in the, the timeline or scope of this work. And so I think that when we look at all of our pathway programs, whether it's HC, whether it's dual language, whether it's a, you know, an option school, these are all elements which I think are really important for the, you know, for our identity here in Seattle and our, our district. We struggle to fund them, and we haven't figured out a sustainable model to do it. But part of that is making sure that we have sufficient community engaging in these things to, to reach critical mass. And to be able to, essentially, enrollment funds programs. Maybe that's the best way to put it. So if we have sufficient enrollment, we're better able to fund a program, whether it's a dual language, whether it's a CTE, and whatever it is. So I'm, I'm cognizant of these sort of opposing forces. But I wanted to share with you some feedback that I heard from, from a community member at the, the meeting that I had at the McDonald Elementary. I'll put this out there. I am a middle-aged white guy in a middle-class, upper-middle-class white district. And going to that meeting at McDonald was the most diverse community meeting I have ever had in my district. And it was awesome. And I had somebody come to me and say, well, I'm, I'm really worried about, you know, diversity, and how, how are we creating diversity in, in Lincoln? Because they were in the Lincoln attendance area. And that was my, where I was emphasizing, the, the Dual Language Immersion Program includes a specific set aside for heritage speakers, which naturally brings in people. We have people from all over the city that are drawn into that program, that actually gives us a really, you know, much better demographic balance than we get with just the neighborhood. So by assigning the DLI pathway to Lincoln, we're actually improving the racial balance at Lincoln through that work. And I just want to make sure that that's explicitly understood.
Director Mack?
I also want to reiterate that this is, this is upon recommendation of those two schools. The decision to place two language immersion programs within close proximity was made in 2013 by a previous board. In terms of capacity, it is a challenge. It's a challenge. The impact on the neighborhood attendance area school and their boundary and their being overloaded, Green Lake, is, is dramatically impacted by the decision to, to have two option schools placed close to each other in this location. So Director Geary, your, your points are very well taken. And in terms of balancing all the factors for racial segregation, equity, attending your neighborhood school, because both of those schools, the elementary school, McDonald and John Stanford, are both within the Lincoln area boundary, those students, that's their, Lincoln is their school, the ones that are living there, that's their school. The school that, the, the students that are opting in or lotteryed in that are the native speakers, that don't live in the neighborhoods, are the ones that would be excluded if we do not create this pathway. And those are the students, when we've gotten lots of emails from this community advocating on this, when they had a task force some time ago, they advocated on it, they decided, they, they said Lincoln should be the pathway when it opens. And since this amendment came forward, I think it first posted a week and a half ago or so, I have not seen one single person say no. They, every single response is yes, this is the right choice, please and thank you. So I think we're being responsive to community needs. We're balancing all of our criteria and, and supporting our students.